Thanks, everyone, for coming this evening. We're going to call the Tuesday, November 7th, 2017 meeting of the Everett Planning Commission to order, beginning with the roll call, please.
Chair Holland.
Here.
Commissioner Tisdale.
Here.
Commissioner Jordison.
Here.
Commissioner Beck.
Here.
Commissioner Zalinski.
Here.
Commissioner Lavra.
Here.
Commissioner Dunn.
Here.
Before we get started with the agenda this evening, we have one of our fellow planning commissioners who's leaving us, Lauren Sand, and so we'd like to, Planning Commission Gotham Summit, I'd like to say a few words before we get started, and I will start with Commissioner Dunn, please.
Okay. Well, thank you, Lauren, for your leadership and your years and years of service. We've had a number of lively discussions on the Planning Commission, and we thank you for that.
I've only worked with Commissioner Sand for a few months, but it has been good, and thank you for your service.
Well, I've had the pleasure of working with Lauren at Snohomish County and serving with him here on the commission for the last year and a half or so, and I've always enjoyed Lauren's sense of humor, his perspective on the issues that we face, and his well-reasoned arguments, so, Lauren, you will be missed.
Ditto. You're going to be very missed, particularly by me. Somebody's got to keep me in line.
This'll be covered with fingerprints, so you know it's from all of us. You are dignified, and you are wise, but you're also one heck of a nice fella. It's been an honor to work with you and to know you. Hope we see you often. Thanks for your service.
Lauren, I appreciate you saying, "From there, we all look a lot younger." That was a nice compliment. Never said that when you were sitting next to me. Three years of working with you, it's great, and knew you and worked with you at the county, and I would just say, keep on doing the fun things you're doing.
Yeah, Lauren, I'd just like to thank you from all the planning commissioners. You know, you bring a lot of wisdom to this city, and you spend countless and countless hours of public service, and it's truly going to be missed, and I know we're all going to miss you up here, so, thanks for all of your service and everything you've done for the city. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
The other day, I tried to figure out how long I've been on the planning commission. I think it's eight or 10 years, and I'm not sure how long, but it's...
2009?
Huh?
2009.
Is it 2009, so, eight. So, it's, and it's been a blast all along. I've served with a number of folks on the commission, and I have to say that each and every one of them and of you have been just an absolute pleasure to serve with and to discuss things with and to debate with, and what I appreciate so much is the fact that this commission, as well as the others, we've always been able to have different opinions about things and debate them in a very professional and open and respectful manner, but in the end, votes are taken, decisions are made, recommendations are passed forward to the city council, and they're all based upon a commitment and a concern for what's best for this community, and I think the city has been extremely well-served by this commission and the other commissions, and Allen and his staff, who have just done a great job. So, thanks to all of you, and I will be watching on TV, so, if I have a disagreement, I might show up and testify. Thank you very much.
Okay, so, on to our first item of business. It would be the approval of the October 17 minutes to the planning commission. Have the commissioners have an opportunity to review the minutes, and if so, any corrections or motions?
I see none.
Motion to approve?
I move that we approve the minutes.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Call for the vote.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Lavra?
Yes.
Commissioner Zalinski?
Abstain.
Commissioner Beck?
Yes.
Commissioner Jordison?
Yes.
Commissioner Tisdale?
Yes.
Chair Holland?
Yes. This is an opportunity for any committee reports from the commissioners. Commissioner Dunn, any reports tonight?
Sure, I'll just report. I attended the Forterra Green Everett Day, and they planted over 300, or 650 trees, so I was there for work, but also, I would consider we're always representing the city, so it was just a great day to see our urban forestry program in action.
Commissioner Lavra? Commissioner Zalinski?
No report.
Commissioner Beck?
I think you've gotten my report.
Okay. Commissioner Jordison?
No report.
Commissioner Tisdale?
I attended one of the city's trainings on how to deal with the folks that have problems on the street, and it was two hours' time in the first 10 minutes. I wondered why I was there, but I can tell you all, it was very informative, the training was good, and I would encourage everybody in the crowd or in the city to attend it, because it really helps you understand where those folks are and what they do and how to help them in a different way than we might otherwise.
Great, thank you. No report for me. Staff comments?
Yes, just a reminder that on December 12th is the boards and commissions' reception from 4:00 to 6:00 p.m. at the Everett Events Center for all of the commissions and boards that serve the city, so, would encourage you to attend there. Staff will be there, and so, would, it's a good opportunity just to kind of reflect on some of the things that you've done over the year and meet some of the other members of different boards and commissions in the city. That's it.
Great, thank you. Well, this is an opportunity for our great audience tonight to address the planning commission on anything that's not on our agenda tonight. If anyone would like to do that, I encourage you to step forward now and state your name and address for the record. I'm seeing none, so I guess we'll go on to the first item of business tonight, which is the opiate substitution treatment facility. Turn it over to Allen.
Okay. Good evening. Alan Giffen, planning director, and see if we can get this up on the screen here. So, I want to start by saying first that we're going to ask the planning commission to conduct the public hearing and take testimony tonight, but also ask that the hearing be continued until December 5th. The continuance is requested to allow staff to continue reviewing questions raised by commissioners and the public, including legal developments that have arisen since the city first enacted the opiate substitution treatment facilities regulations in 2003. Staff will make a presentation tonight, but without a recommendation. The staff report had a recommendation, but staff hereby withdraws the recommendation pending further review. Hill Cayman, our Director of Public Health and Safety, seated at my right, will also provide some information about parallel efforts the city is making to increase access to treatment within the city. Following my PowerPoint and Hill's comments, we recommend taking testimony from those wishing to speak tonight, but then we would ask that you continue the hearing until your meeting on December 5th. So, I'll go ahead with my PowerPoint, and then we can get into public testimony after that. So, our existing regulations allow only one opiate substitution treatment facility within the city, and that is, currently, there's one located at Evergreen Way and 100th Street Southwest in South Everett. You can see the, on the screen, the star here, that's the current location. Therapeutic Health Services operates within a business park on Evergreen Way, and you can see the existing zones in South Everett. The green is the E1 with the mixed-use overlay, the gray is the E1 zone, and the blue is the C1 zone. Those are the commercial zones that do allow for the location of one treatment center within the city, and it's allowed only south of SR 526. This was enacted in 2003, when the first request we had to cite a facility in Everett resulted in a planning process, and the result of that planning process was the current code. This is just a little bit further south on Evergreen Way, showing again the C1, E1, and the E1 mixed-use overlay zoning where a facility would be allowed if we allowed more than one. The proposed code amendment that we had recommended initially in your packet included an amendment to the definition, slight definition, that we've talked about in previous workshops. I won't get into the details of that at all, it's pretty minor. And the code amendment that we had been talking about would be to allow a second treatment facility, and the staff recommendation had been allowing it in the Broadway mixed-use zoning north of 24th Street, or in a public hospital, or hospital, and within that Broadway mixed-use zone, that it would be subject to a public notice and planning director review process. For discussion, at the request of the planning commission, we also had an option for allowing it in the B3 Central Business District, also with public notice required, and a hearing examiner, public hearing review process. The locations we had been recommending were, again, the Broadway mixed-use zone north of 24th Street. You can see on this map, you might have a little eye strain to read the 13th and 24th Street there. We've broken that map into two segments, so we could fit the linear corridor of Broadway, and the yellow, or, excuse me, the golden rod color there is the Broadway mixed-use zoning, within which staff had recommended allowing for a opiate substitution treatment facility. Planning commission had asked also for the option of allowing a facility within the B3 zone. That's the bright pink fuchsia, whatever the color is there that occupies the center of the screen, and in our previous discussions, we had suggested that we do have some restrictions on certain uses along retail streets, designated retail streets, which include Hewitt, Colby, a couple of blocks on Wetmore, and a couple of blocks on Rucker between California and Wall Street, that we have certain uses that are restricted there, and that restriction could apply to an opiate treatment facility if the commission were to recommend allowing it in the B3 zone. One of the things that came up during the public testimony was the number of social services that are located in Everett, and in particular, in the downtown, and we had provided some maps in your packet, and they wouldn't show up very well on this map, so what we've done is the yellow dots replace the ones that are on your map that were a little bit smaller and a little bit duller in color, but this is the area between, on Evergreen Way, between 41st Street and roughly 526, showing, and what we've done is attempted to map all of the social services we could identify within the city of Everett. I'm not positive that we caught every single one of them, but we do know who most of those agencies are, and we believe that we have the greatest majority of them all represented here. This map shows the area of South Everett, including Everett Mallway, the Evergreen Way south of 526, and a little bit over on 19th Avenue southeast, and I'll comment, first go back to the orange color that you see on this map, and the orange and slightly redder color that you see on this map represents the redder, the color, the higher the density of businesses within the proximity of that area there, and so you can see that there's, for example, around Everett Mall, as you would expect, a higher density of businesses within that vicinity than you would see in the linear corridor like Evergreen Way. And this is North Everett, so from about 41st Street north up to the far north end of the city, you can see all the yellow dots, and where they're concentrated is a little bit along North Broadway, and also within the downtown and around the Everett Station area. The more purple-to-blueish color represents an even higher density of business locations, and so it does kind of bear out the, some of the testimony that you heard previously from the Downtown Everett Association, that there is a, both a high concentration of social services, as well as businesses that are located within the downtown area. When you get a little bit further north on Broadway, the color somewhat faded to where hardly shows any business density at all, and so we took a look at another map, and this one, every black dot that you see on the map is record of our business licenses within the city, and you can see, as you get further north on Broadway, and it takes that roughly 45-degree angle turn out towards Marysville, that we do have a lower density of business licenses along that area, and so, and you can see a bit more concentration along Broadway from about 12th Street to the south, and then within the downtown area, heavier concentration of black dots there. So, we have received comments, in addition to those from Commissioner Beck, who has recommended an alternative to the staff's earlier recommendation, and that would be, and correct me if I'm wrong, but to allow opiate substitution treatment facilities in any zone that a medical clinic would be allowed.
Treat it as a medical clinic, in the broad sense of the word.
Okay, thank you. We also received a letter from Commissioner Alex Lark, who is unable to attend tonight. He has also made an alternative recommendation to allow, in any zone, a clinic is allowed, with the exception of the B3 zone, the Central Business District, and you have also received a very extensive amount of correspondence and emails from the public, and we forwarded those to you and posted those on the website, and probably run out of packets that we had made copies of all of that, those comments. So, our recommendation after, I will ask Hill Cayman in a moment, just to address you, but for tonight would be to take public testimony, close the public hearing when you completed the testimony, and continue the hearing until December 5th, and then hold discussion with identifying any items that you would like for staff to address between now and the, or at the December 5th hearing. So, with that, if you have any questions, well, let's wait until Hill makes his presentation about some other parallel efforts that the city is taking to increase access to treatment. Hill?
Thank you, Hill Cayman, Public Health and Safety Director. And I'll be brief. When we were here before you, several months ago, asking for continuance to do the research that Allen has just shared with you, we wanted to reiterate our commitment to making sure that the people who needed access to treatment were going to be able to get that access to treatment, and so, we, over the previous six months, have been working together with the county, the health district, and the various providers of treatment to push that access to treatment closer to those who need it. So, our goal really is for the city and the community at large, that people can get treatment that they need for addiction on demand. Some of the things that we have done is continue to work with THS to find an appropriate building for an additional methadone clinic. We have also worked with Ideal Options, who is a provider of Suboxone, another medication-assisted treatment that is an effective approach to addressing opioid use disorder. We have been talking to Community Health Center Providence, Kaiser, and Molina. All of them are looking to start Suboxone programs and are exploring way, or have Suboxone programs currently in place. For example, in our conversations with Ideal Options, they have capacity to expand hundreds of slots to take new patients, and so they're working with the Snohomish County Jail to get people who are coming out of jail. They're working with us to provide Suboxone and medication-assisted treatment for those who are needing that service, and reducing the wait time on those. As I said, we've been working with our other government partners around the community. We are working closely with the health district. One of the things we did isn't related to treatment, but we are trying to approach the opioid problem, not just from many prongs. We created a safe needle cleanup kit was one of the projects that came out of these conversations, because in addition to the need for treatment, we've learned about the collateral consequences of this epidemic, and so that's been one of our projects that really was sparked by this conversation that we committed to you, we would start. We've also been working with the Accountable Communities of Health, which is this organization that is doing Medicaid transformation in the state. They have an opioid work group. They're looking to provide additional dollars and access for those who need medication-assisted treatment, who are largely a Medicaid population, and making sure that funds are available into this community for that. And we, out of the council Public Safety Committee, we had an hour all on opioids a couple of weeks ago, and so staff has been working on a gap analysis and understanding the city's role in responding to this. This is not an issue that can be addressed or answered entirely by the city, but we are going to be working in partnership with the healthcare, with law enforcement, with other governments, with private entities, private treatment, insurance companies, all who play a role in making sure that we respond, so that we have that treatment access on demand that our community expects.
What do you guys do with public education, like targeting youth at-risk populations, things of that nature? I actually, I've been looking into this a lot, and I've been trying to find a plan for opioid addiction in particular, and I'm not finding a lot of information. I do have the Streets Plan, which basically is targeting kind of at what I would call stage three, stage four, when people are already homeless. What I'm trying to understand is there's functioning folks out there that are having addiction issues. They're not homeless, and I'm trying to understand what we're doing in terms of education and addressing people who are not at the stage where they're homeless, or destitute, or have other issues that are, you know, part of a deterioration.
I think that's a really, really valid point, and I think it's an area in which we have not focused particularly, largely because the flood of crisis that we experience at the city, and where we interact with it is with our first responders, our police, fire, public works, parks, and what they see, and what is large, is that in the street visible signs of addiction that are at a crisis stage, and so, that's why we are really reaching out to those partners who, particularly, I want to highlight the work of the health district, who has elevated this to the top of their priorities. They have a new health officer, Mark Beatty. I know Heather Thomas, their communications director's here, and she's going to share a few words during the comment period as well. They've created a new website, snohomishoverdoseprevention.com. The idea of that is to be a one-stop shop for information for the community around opioids, how to get treatment, what local resources are available, prevention efforts, public outreach and education, and we are hoping to, and I know these meetings have been going on every single week for six months.
We've been hearing about a lot of meetings for years now, actually, and I'm just, because I'm looking for cost-benefit analysis, because I see a lot of recommendations coming out of the Streets Committee, but I don't see any analysis of, we have limited resources, how do we use those most effectively, things of that nature, and I'm kind of wondering, what is the coordination going on between the city and the health department? Because I think that we all want to figure out the way to deal with this crisis in the most effective manner. We all realize we have limited resources, and, you know, treatment clinics are one of the most effective methods out there. For every dollar you spend on treatment, you save $38 at the other end at stage four, and that's a study that was done in 2005.
I think that is something that we all support entirely. I think your point is very important, and it's something that we need to be reiterating again and again, that we need to expand treatment for those who need it.
Thanks for the great information, Alan. Was there any other questions for Commissioner Zalinski?
I'm just wondering where the healthcare providers stand on this, you know, the Everett clinics, and Providence Hospital, and Kaiser, where are they on treatment options through them?
So, I don't want to speak for any of them. I have had conversations with Providence and Kaiser. Kaiser, what they explained to me is they hope to be able to provide Suboxone treatment for 500 individuals who are experiencing opioid use disorder. I heard the same number from Community Health Center. Providence is also exploring how they could provide that service. Most of the healthcare community is a little bit hesitant, or they want to do this, they're figuring out how to do it, because they worry about opening their doors and turning their clinic into a facility that is just used to treat people who are experiencing addiction, but all of the providers I spoke to said, "We are going to do this, we just need to understand how to do this," and frankly, it's new. Most of the, most of the healthcare providers are talking about Suboxone, buprenorphine, and using that as the medication-assisted treatment tool that they want to use, but with all of the providers that I have spoken with over the several months, I believe in the next year, we'll probably have 1,000 slots available for people to get buprenorphine.
Well, that's encouraging. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any additional questions? Any questions of staff then, before? Okay.
Commissioner Holland, if I could just make a point, that the testimony tonight won't be the last opportunity. By continuing the public hearing until December 5th, the public will still have the opportunity to address and speak before you at that, at that meeting, too.
Great, thank you.
Alan, in the information we had from the previous presentation, there were about 300 slots that were needed?
I think what I would suggest is, representatives of therapeutic health services are here tonight, and I think they can speak to the numbers better than I can.
Thank you. Thank you. With that, I guess we'll open up for public testimony.
Just a quick question. Do we want to hear from therapeutic health services first? I mean, do we, or do we, I just, I didn't know if it would help anybody, if...
Your meeting.
Yeah. If you'd like to hear from them first, we'd be happy to have them speak first, so...
And the health district?
Yeah, if there's anybody...
I think there's some professionals in the, in the audience that might provide some information to some folks here. I think this is a great educational opportunity for everybody.
Sure. So, if anyone from THS wants to address the planning commission at this time, or from the health district, we'd be happy to have you come up and speak.
Well, Heather Thomas is here from the health district, and it'd be great to have her speak with the commission.
Hi, Heather, can you make sure you state your name and address for the record, please?
Sure. Heather Thomas, Snohomish Health District, 3020 Rucker Avenue in Everett. As Helen mentioned, I'm the Public and Government Affairs Manager, here to share some comments on behalf of the health district. New data released from the Washington State Department of Health earlier this week shows that Snohomish County had a total of 90 overdose deaths in 2016. This does represent a decrease over previous years, but does not necessarily mean that the heroin and opioid use is declining. The increased availability of naloxone or Narcan means that less people are dying, but that usage is likely unchanged or likely increasing. Thanks to a CDC grant, the Snohomish Health District has been able to partner with Providence to collect data on the number of overdoses in their emergency department. In a three-month period from June through August, there were 100 overdoses treated at Providence Regional Medical Center Everett alone. As we continue to wrap our arms around the sheer complexity of the opioid epidemic, it's increasingly important to remember that opioid use disorder is not a failure of will, it is a disease. It is a disease that's also 100% preventable and 100% treatable, but in order for us to ever have hope of achieving that, we need both treatment choices and treatment capacity. Buprenorphine, also known as Suboxone, and methadone are now considered the standard of care for treatment of opioid use disorder or dependence, including for pregnant women. Information gathered by the Alcohol and Drug Abuse Institute at the University of Washington shows that populations treated with either buprenorphine or methadone are better able to reduce their drug use within 12 months. Similar research has shown that buprenorphine or methadone treatment also has a 50% lower mortality rate than detox or counseling alone. However, it's important to remember that what works for one person may not work for the next. Clients seeking treatment need to understand the risks and the benefits of all options available, but they can't do that unless options are available. Patients... Patients need a choice, and part of that choice is ensuring that the treatment capacity is ready and available. The Snomish Health District is committed to continuing our efforts with the City of Everett and other partners throughout the county, to make sure everyone has access to treatment, whether you're in Everett or any other city or town. And I could also address Commissioner Beck's comment about outreach and prevention. Prevention is one of the core pieces of public health, that is our role. We're working closely with the City of Everett and other partners. One statistic I could give you is $1 in prevention saves $18 to $20 on social services down the road. So investments by the City of Everett into the Health District are helping to fund that here locally, and other cities across the county. I know you've heard a lot of meetings that have been happening. I was hoping I could share more information tonight, but there's more coming on November 20th, so stay patient. There's been a lot going on behind the scenes, but we're getting close to announcing it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody from THS here this evening?
My name is Norman Johnson. I am the CEO of Therapeutic Health Services. And I must agree, go back a little bit, 20 years ago, I was in this room. And about 20 years ago was the first time that I came up here to see about providing opioid services. 12 or 14 years ago, with the help of this community, we opened the first clinic of its kind in South Everett. No way that I ever think that I would be back here talking to you about opioid treatment, and especially another clinic. We received word from the county a couple of years ago, would we please open another clinic? It was not something that we wanted to do. And so we were responding to the needs of the country, to the needs of the state, the county, the city, but directly from the county's request. So that's why we're here, and the data supports the need for it. My job is to try to address the issues that you have, and to make sure that we minimize any negative impact. This young lady to my left, or to my right, is a citizen of Everett. So I became acquainted with Everett 20 years ago, and it took 10 years to get the first clinic in here. I hope it doesn't take that. We have too many lives being lost. Marley is from Everett, and how long have you lived here, Marley?
Pardon me?
How long have you lived here?
Well, my whole life.
She's been here her whole life, and so I take a lot of direction from her. I always thought, once you were the CEO, you ran things. You don't. You ask questions, and people tell you what they need, and you do the best you can with it. So what I thought we might do, if there were some burning questions about running. I have been operating methadone services, opioid treatment services, since 1979. Four years prior to that, I was hired by the company that I've been running since '79. I have a pretty good comprehensive understanding of the negatives and the positives, and I would like to respond to some of the issues that you have great concern about, so they get addressed.
Commissioners, any questions for you at this time?
Generally speaking, what type of patients are being served through your clinic? In terms of demographic groups, things of that nature?
From A through Z, including your favorite football team. Now, I say that not facetiously, but in fact, THS provides a broad set of services, not just opioid treatment, mental health treatment, alcohol drug treatment, and we have two youth programs. One is here in Everett, and one is with Vanguard. What is the name of that? They have about 200 clients in this various school. So the organization of THS is not just an opioid treatment, it's extremely comprehensive, and it has actually accomplished what the United States government wants to have happen in 2020. We accomplished it 10 years ago, so that a family gets wraparound services. No one solution is going to solve this issue. In 1970s, Nixon made a statement that we had turned the corner on opioid treatment. I don't know what corner he went around, but the ones that I've been going around all these years, it has not gone down, it's increased. There are issues. There are some negative issues, and I think you have grounds on which to ask for how they're going to be addressed. So if you would please prevent them, I can tell you my experience since 1974.
So any questions?
I have one. What, teach me about your community relations monitor. What's the reason for those folks?
Because people would hang around the building. Let's take the example, one of the most concentrated living conditions in the entire state of Washington is Capitol Hill, and Seattle, and First Hill. And a lot of the people who are on welfare, I'll use that general term, don't have anything they have to do, and they love to hang around. When I found out that McDonald's, Starbucks, you name any of the eatery places, that our clients were camping out in there. Example, I got a phone call back in the early 80s from a McDonald's at Third and, I think, Pine, a couple miles away from the agency. They had found out that I was running, and so they said, you got to do something. We have seniors coming in here in the morning for breakfast. When your program closes, half of them seem to come down here, and they camp out for a couple hours with their children, and they have one cup of coffee, and they stay for two or three hours. What are you going to do about it? And that was before I had the community relations people. So I physically went down, one day after we closed, I think it was 9:30 or 10:00, and sure enough, I would say 75% of the clients in that McDonald's were clients from my program. Now, when I walked in, half of them decided it was time to leave. And so that told me something, there had to be other things for them to do. So that's one of the reasons why I then met with the citizens of the First Hill Association. They did not want to negotiate, they wanted us gone. Well, trying to cite an opioid treatment program is almost impossible. And right now, with the values of the property, I would say it would be impossible. So what we did was say, okay, what is the issue? And the issue was they're hanging around. Some of our seniors don't feel safe on the corners, they're panhandling. So we hired, wasn't in the budget, but I thought I got to do something, we hired two additional people. We had one. And their job was to canvass the agency with a two-block radius, and anybody seen more than once, a picture was to be taken. And that picture did not break their confidentiality, it was to come back to me and our staff, and we would talk to them about it. Those who got shown up in the picture more than once, I'm going to tell you what I did, but so does everybody else knows it. I shipped them to what I called Siberia. And so I took them out of the core part of Seattle and shipped them to, I hope the bodies here from Shoreline. That was sort of the threat, that if you did hang around Capitol Hill or First Hill, that, it's amazing, about 90% of the hanging out disappeared. And right now, we have people in some extremely expensive condos who are very supportive of the agency. There are now three people, they're there from 6 o'clock in the morning until 12:30, and their job is to make sure you keep moving. I even bought glasses with film, so it didn't look like I was taking a picture, that's already in the glasses, and we could do that. Whatever else was needed is what we did. The thing is to address the issue. We are only one block from the Poly Clinic, we're two blocks from Swedish Hospital, we're two blocks from Virginia Mason. Thousands of people go in, but they don't hang out. And so the thing was to address that. I feel pretty confident if any of the citizens from the First Hill Association were to hear now, including one of the former deputy mayor, Bob Watt, they would explain to you, we addressed every issue they had. And that's why I was asking for any questions. Now, why would Everett need it? So Marley, who runs the Everett Clinic, that was open with about 150 people 12 years ago, has 800 people in that clinic. There should not be concentration like that. She does have 80 parking lots, so they can come and go, but at the same time, where were they going to hang out? When I first went there, someone said, well, the Motel 6 is more trouble than anything else. Turns out, they were right, but we're right across the street from them, and we have one or two. One, and Marley asked for another, so I am giving her, effective, I think it was this morning, an additional person to make sure people come in. We have childcare, there's no reason for anyone to stay in our area for more than an hour and a half, and that's the extent of any counseling. If they don't have counseling, they should be in and out of that clinic in about 10 minutes. And so that's what we do. We provide childcare so that parents don't have to worry about their kids while they're in counseling. Does that answer the question about the community? Now, all the methadone clinics, I'm responsible for five. All five of them have community relations. They have a blue-purple jacket with stripes all over it, and THS on it, and community relations. And that's how we're trying to address any issues that are in the community. Now, there's one spot in Bellevue that's really small. We've got 400 clients in there, and believe me, we have to keep them moving and out of the area. Any other questions?
How many of the 800, what's the size of the Evergreen Way Clinic?
We have, well, currently, we have, I'm sorry, oh, currently, we have 812, it vacillates between 812 and 820, our maximum is 850. We also have about 417 of our clients that have earned privileges, carry privileges. So all of those patients aren't coming out on a daily basis, only about half or less.
But you need to expand, and so what I'm trying to get to is, if there's 800 people there, how many would go to another clinic if you opened one?
We anticipate, what do we anticipate, Norman, 150?
100, there's a waiting list currently of about 150, and there are about 150 people that would live closer to a clinic in the north. So about 300 people would probably, day one or two, be transferred.
Thank you. Any additional questions? Thank you.
Oh, thank you.
I do want to make one other comment. We do Suboxone also. So everyone thinks, whenever there's a new medication, that that's the answer. Suboxone is only, for the most part, utilized well by those of us, I'll put myself in the middle-class, who have jobs, who go to school. It doesn't seem to, for the quote-unquote person who's not employed or not in school, doesn't seem to work as well. I don't want to mislead you, that Suboxone is your answer. It is not. Nothing is the answer. There are over 400,000 people on methadone in the United States. 50% of them end up 1.5 times in an emergency room at $2,000 a pop. That can be reduced tremendously by doing some prevention, and I really believe the prevention piece, both with Suboxone and anything else, is what we need to put more emphasis on.
Thank you. So moving on to, with additional public testimony, the first one I had signed up, and if anybody wants to give testimony tonight, please make sure, I don't know, there should be sheets over there, these speaker signing sheets, make sure that you fill those out and get them to Kathy for us, if you could, please. So the first person I had signed up was Norma Johnson. Norman?
He just, he's just talking.
He just spoke.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. My fault. Sorry, Norma.
He said anything. He was all wind up.
Debbie Warfield.
Good evening, and thank you for letting me give my comments and recommendation on this very sensitive issue. My name is Debbie Warfield, and I've lived in the Northwest neighborhood for 61 years. And to me, it's just so unconscionable that necessary medical treatment is being withheld from those who suffer from an opiate dependency. This has been debated for the last three years, and we're still, we're still debating, we're, I'm hearing things are going to be happening in a year, maybe six months, but what about immediately? Because lives are being lost as we speak. And the reason that they're being lost is because if we're saying 150 or 300 people are not getting the medication that they need, that means they're out on the street, they're doing things in our city that we hear, all these people talking against the clinics, they're out doing those things. If they were on medication, that would be reduced. So I think people really need to think about that. This isn't a negative, this is a very positive for our city. And we, you know, the discussion goes on about, is addiction a disease, or is it a moral failing? I think that should stop. I think we all should realize, I think if you've done any reading, educated yourself at all, that we've discovered it's definitely a disease, not a moral failing, not as any other disease, cancer, diabetes, anything else, if, I don't know how you can call those a moral failing. I think really what we're talking about is stigma and fear. And people have not educated themselves about addiction, and so they're very fearful. I can totally understand that. I was at that place at one point in my life, too. I didn't know much about addiction until I had a son that became addicted to heroin. And I can speak on that he was a very educated, very intelligent, very active son, you know? He loved us, we loved him, and it was like something was wrong, you know? Why would he become addicted to heroin? That was totally baffling to ourselves, our family, and my son. He would go into treatments and come out and say, you know, I just don't understand why I was given this addictive behavior. You know, listening in the treatment centers, there was lots of abuse, people that were, you know, had really hard life situations, and he really didn't have that. So we, you know, he was just always wondering why, how, and very fearful of dying. Medication was never offered to him, he passed away five years ago from an opiate overdose. And so I think until you've walked in the shoes, you really cannot speak. And I do, you know, I do want to listen to other people's. I know there's lots of fear that if a clinic comes into Everett, especially in the downtown core, that we are going to run every new business out of town. It makes no sense. Where is the proof to that? There's been methadone clinics, like the gentleman said, since the 70s. I certainly haven't heard about any violent crimes or anything else going on. It's kind of like the AIDS epidemic. At first, everyone was so fearful, you know, they didn't want to be in contact with anyone that had AIDS, they didn't want to be in a classroom. It's the same with addiction. Until you know about it and can understand it, you have that fear. Totally, you know, I totally understand that. I also believe that Everett alone, nor any other city, can handle this epidemic alone. It's going to take all cities, counties, states, federal agencies, to take hold of this. But that's going to be, you know, that's years. Talked to Executive Summers today, and I know that they have a plan, but that's going to take time to get that organized, and while that's happening, people are dying. If people can...
Ms. Warfield, I hate to... Ms. Warfield, I hate to interrupt you, but we do have a lot of people that want to give testimony tonight, and normally we like to keep it to three minutes or less. And if you could come to the, you know, the code amendment and that, and your, what your feelings are towards that, and maybe wrap up so we can get other folks to speak tonight. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So you, I'm sure you know what my thoughts are on that. The code, to me, is discriminatory and inhumane. So, to me, it needs to be revised, and we need to be able to provide a medical facility without the shame and stigma. Thanks.
Thank you so much for your testimony. Guy called, Waller?
Cad.
Cad, okay. Thank you, if you can state your name and record for, or name and address for the record again, and again, if we can try to keep our testimony to three minutes or less.
No problem. My name's Guy Cadwallader, I've been a Snohomish County resident my whole life. Not only am I a recovering addict, but I also work in the field as a counseling support system. If we don't provide these services, how are anything going to get better? We can have all the meetings in the world, right? Those services don't just dole out medications, they have counselors in there that do professional work. They provide services, they connect them with other wraparound services. Most addicts need wraparound services. If they're not provided, they don't recover. We can have all the meetings in the world, people are dying. One in five opiate overdoses in the state of Washington have, in the last year, have been in Snohomish County. We still haven't done anything, right? The idea of addiction being a disease came about in 1785. It's been around that long. It's a proven fact, okay? The governor of Vermont gave us his state-of-the-state speech for an hour and a half in 2014 on the opiate addiction. That's how bad it is everywhere, not just here. If we don't address the issue, we are going to have more issues and more people are going to die. You don't have to be poor to be an addict, trust me. I already understand that. I'm a recovering addict myself, and I'm not poor, and I never was. This disease, and I got addicted from a doctor who gave me a bunch of pain medication and kept giving it to me. We have to do something. If we don't address this, more people will die. You have to quit meeting and start building. PCN has 141 beds in it. It's up in Cedar Woolley. It's part of the North Sound Behavioral Health Organization. In about six months, they're going to close their doors. There is not, that's the biggest treatment, inpatient treatment facility in the state. They're going to close their doors in six months. What are we going to do with our addicts to send them to treatment, to help them? We have to start doing this now. Thanks.
Thank you. Jim Hill?
Thank you. My name is Jim Hill, and I live at 3120 Colby, right here in downtown. I think we've, we all know that there is a medical emergency going on with opioid addiction. We think that we, we know that we need a cure specifically to address the proposed sites of these clinics. My main thing is the central business district. I know at least one of the places that has been in consideration is very close to where I live. And for, and for me, I can sit and watch out my window, anytime of the day, anytime at night, and I can see people with mental disorders, drug and alcohol addiction problems, and watch their actions, their interactions with themselves, their interactions with the public. It's made it where I don't want to go outside at night to go downtown to some of the businesses that I have frequented for years, and I've lived in downtown, in the downtown Everett area for the last 22 years. This is not something new for me. I hear people screaming at each other, profanity laced at the top of their lungs, anytime. I've seen people who have been waiting around by the 7-Eleven to get a next drug fix. They come and lay down by the building next to me as they shoot up and they pass out, and they're out for hours and hours and hours. You know, it's a crisis that is very close. One of the proposed sites is two blocks away from two hotels, one on either side. It's a block from the children's museum. It's across the street from apartment buildings, restaurants. It's close to other businesses in the downtown area, and those two hotels do bring in a lot of visitors, coming in for Silver Text hockey games, concert venues, so it is affecting business. There's so many businesses that have closed in the downtown area, the building is still vacant. This is affecting all of us. We do need the facilities, we just don't need them in the downtown business district. Thank you.
Great, thank you. And just for clarification purposes for the audience, that what's being asked of the commission is for change in the zoning code, not a site-specific application for any sighting of any particular facility, just where that facility may be located, just wanted everybody to understand that, so. The next person we have is Connery Glanz. Ms. Glanz? Or Connor?
Hello, my name is Connery Glanz, and I live at 211 Capri Place in Everett. I turned 18 in September and have been a registered voter for five weeks. I see there's a lot I need to learn now about my local civics, and I think there may be something I can teach you, too. You're all members of this important commission, the Planning Commission, and I thank you for your public service. I'm concerned about tonight's public hearing to expand locations for an opiate substitution treatment, for opiate substitution treatment facilities. I am pretty stumped as to why you ever restricted these treatment facilities in the first place. I went to my first bikini barista stand over five years ago in Everett, and they sure don't wear those bikinis at any beach in this area. So apparently, the city allows adult-level entertainment at coffee stands all over the city, but only allows medically-necessitated treatment for an addiction to opiates at one location tucked away in South Everett, even though it's currently over capacity. That's pretty crazy. Since I'm 18 and spend all my time on the internet, I looked up the city of Everett's zoning code and came up with some fun facts for everyone here tonight. I learned that espresso stands can be located throughout Everett in any one of 10 land-use zones. Clinics and medically, medical-related activities can be located throughout Everett in any one of 17 land-use zones. Blood or plasma donations can be made in 13 different zones. Adult entertainment businesses are allowed in nine different zones, but it seems they are restricted by some footnotes. So you, so you may just want to go back to my statement on the bikini barista stands for your adult entertainment. Choking aside, the sad truth about the values of our city is that land use policy and practice has severely restricted opiate substitution treatment facilities, not based on their use category as a clinic or medical-related activity, but it has singled them out to limit them into two zones south of the Boeing Freeway, and arbitrarily capped the number of treatment facilities to only one. I couldn't find any other use in the city that has been singled out like this. I guess the good news is that funeral parlors and mortuaries are allowed in 11 land-use zones, and you'll need them if you don't change the unjust policies and codes that restrict opiate treatment facilities, facility locations in Everett. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Jeff Westfall. My office is 2829 Rockefeller Avenue. First, thank you, everyone, that's already shared. It's a pretty heartbreaking night to sit here and discuss these things. I'm a business owner over on Rockefeller, I own an insurance agency over there. Monthly, about twice a month now, what business owners there struggle with is about twice a month now, we'll come in and we have to move someone out of our doorway that's already sleeping there. Some of them wake up easily, some of them don't. Some of them are upset, some of them are not, and you always have to wonder what you're going to get. I'm still afraid that when they don't wake up, that I may find someone that's not alive there. That's a great fear for me. I, too, have lost a lot of people to drugs and alcohol and addictions. So it's very difficult for me to stand here and to say what I'm about to say, is that aside of being a business owner, and I'll actually back up here, we're trying to work with the Parks and Rec Department right now because the planters out in front of my office, they, they aren't maintained, they haven't been maintained for years, so I've replanted them three different times myself. And I always wondered, why do these plants keep on disappearing? And it's because people are stashing drugs there. They're burying drugs and stashing them for someone else to come by and pick up, and it's a, I guess it works well for them, so we're trying to get those removed. These are the things that we struggle with currently. My staff, now that it's this time of year, I have to wonder about them leaving the office after hours. It's a growing concern, because daily it seems to become more. We have more people on the street that are under some kind of use. So as a business owner, it's very difficult to be here. And anything that may increase that population makes me say, I don't know how much longer I want to stay here. So anything that may bring a treatment facility into the downtown core makes me, as a business owner, say, I just can't, I just can't be located here anymore. We'll need to look at relocating. And that's very difficult for me to say, because I believe, like everyone else, that we do have a crisis. Absolutely, no one can argue that. However, I wonder what the, depending on where we place this, what will the impacts be? Because as a business owner, I'm not really affected by retail too much, by walk-in, but I know that's affected. You don't want to go into an area if there are people out front that may be sleeping there, loitering, or under the influence, or et cetera. But I also work with business owners every day, I speak to them every day. And I know one of the things that business owners are struggling with right now is a shortage in the labor force, from A-DC, from retail to high-end positions. And I know for myself that if there's attrition in my staff, and something happens to my area that I work in, it will be harder for me to retain and to find staff. So there's another impact that may hit businesses long-term, is depending on the area, the culture, the environment, the safety, is will people want to work in that area? Not just frequent it as a business, because other businesses can stay open, et cetera, different offices, et cetera, if it's not retail, but you may not be able to get employees there. And that scares me. That worries me. I love, I love downtown Everett. I love the transition that it's made over the years. I'm from this area originally, I grew up in southeast Everett on Seattle Hill Road. 20 years ago, I remember the stigma that Everett had for being basically a drug haven. And I don't think that we're moving back there, but we're, that stigma is starting to return with some of the press that Everett gets. So it worries me. I think there's a lot of things to really consider in the future here. I was just on the verge of starting to look for commercial property. That's where my business has gone, gone, we're looking at commercial property so we can have our own office and other locations and businesses to support us within that property. However, I have to stop that now. I just, I can't bring in a business into this area. I can't justify purchasing a business, it will be right in the, in the heart of a population that's affected this way. You have to excuse me, I have a one-year-old, so I'm lacking sleep, and I'm not as clear as I would like to be. And this meeting was a bit of a surprise to me, I just got notice last night of it. So those are the things that myself, as a business owner, that I say, these are future implications, these are potential implications that no one can really predict the exact outcome for. However, I believe that there are, there are implications that lie there for everyone. I also am curious about the two-blocks radius, the monitoring of the two-blocks radius, what happens outside of that two-blocks? Because that's where I believe a lot of the loitering occurs. I haven't tried to poll any of the other businesses in the different areas of THS, et cetera, but outside of that two-blocks radius, it's monitored, then there's no monitoring. Will we need an increase in police presence as well? Will we need an increase in other services? We need an increase in services, period, across the board. The other side of me, the, and I'm going to wrap this up real quick, the other side of me, the insurance dork says, well, if we end up having property issues, if we end up having theft claims that rise in the area, the zip code ends up paying for it, because people will see raises, increases in all their different rates for insurance, personal lines, for their auto, for their home, for their businesses, the zip code as a whole will be impacted at some point as well. So thank you for your time. Thank you, everyone, for the wonderful sharing and everything that's happened here, I really appreciate it myself. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Paula Townsend. I live at 211 Capri Place, I live in the Madison View Ridge neighborhood. I have two choices on my thing here, either what I prepared, or what I've been writing down since everybody started, and since you sort of mixed it up tonight by offering that we're going to continue this, we're going to discuss it more, we're going to have more questions, we've got some legal counsel weighing in, we've got a change in some directions and staff direction. I'm going to try and stick with what I originally planned. I will have to digress a little, because I've been a resident for over 30 years, and I've also been a land use planner in the area for over 30 years. So I am looking at this as your position in Planning Commission tonight. Not anyone's position as a specialist in treatment for addiction issues, or mental health, or medical issues, and so on. It worries me particularly as a woman, when we start deciding how to treat certain addictions or medical processes, I'm afraid that you may start looking at women's health next, and that does concern me. This is land use, this is not treatment. With that in mind, I'm here to ask you to work purposefully to withdraw land use obstacles that impede locating of necessary opiate treatment, substitution treatment facilities. Obviously, we're in a public health crisis, everyone is in agreement on that, with the current opiate epidemic. The trend of making decisions on treatment of drug addiction from the community forum, like what's going on, where it's been hidden in land use policy, and placing such matters directly into the hands of medical professionals, has become a national conversation that is now a local imperative. The matter at hand should be very specifically in the existing land use code. Do treatment facilities fit best with medical clinics, offices, medically-related activities, or perhaps pharmacies with accompanying clinics as necessary accessory use only? These are the answers that will both logically and legally lead us to the appropriate opportunities for such organizations as THS to locate their next treatment facility within the city. Prevention and treatment for drug and alcohol addiction works to decrease crime, it improves family and community situations, it lowers healthcare costs, and it saves lives. According to our police chief, the prosecutor's office, and the elected officials in the city of Everett, Everett has already shifted focus from criminal justice and punishment for addiction to a public health focus of prevention, treatment, and recovery. I am deeply offended that groups and individuals have come forth to effectively state, "Not in my backyard." Tragically, I call your attention to the fact that this problem has been in our backyard for far too long, and it is the epidemic of the opiates, not an epidemic of treatment options, that finds us here tonight. We don't need uninformed, self-serving individuals and business associations propping up Everett's current poorly-conceived moratorium on the location and the limits for these necessary medical facilities. My concern is not about a particular location for the clinic, it's about a law that directly discriminates against a protected population of vulnerable people in the midst of a public health emergency. Regrettably, the city of Everett is guilty of impeding access to treatment for addiction. I'm concerned, as a tax-paying resident of Everett, that the city may be liable for damages to those unavailable to obtain adequate medical treatment for their addictions. These residents are likely covered under the Americans with Disabilities Act, the ADA. I respectfully ask that the Planning Commission recommend removing the city's legal exposure immediately and step up to this public health crisis. Bringing our codes and policies into alignment with the Safe Streets Initiative, and allowing THS and other organizations to cite their needed treatment facilities in one of many zones where clinics and medical-related activities are allowed in the city of Everett's zoning code is imperative. I'm respectfully asking that you remove those barriers now. And the only last statement I want to make is that of the fact that land use is simple, and it's also difficult. We're all affected by this problem in Everett. What's been said about what's going on in North Everett and the central business district is absolutely the same as what we are facing in Central Everett. I'm on the Evergreen Way Alliance, we're facing these same issues. I've seen open drug use in Central Everett. I see addicts, I see mental health issues, I see this every time I drive down Evergreen Way in my neighborhood. It's not unique to North Everett, it's not unique to South Everett, and it's not unique to Central Everett. If addiction was a moral failing, the city could not be- If addiction was a moral failing, the city could not be suing Purdue at this time. Addiction is real, and the solution is in land use. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Haven't had a chance to meet a lot of you, and I hope one day we get to outside of this environment. I...
Annie, can I get you to just put your name and your address on the record?
Oh, sorry. Andrew Scott Doll, Scott Doll Real Estate, 2707 Colby. I'm largely in favor of mental health funding, and I think that's one of the problems that isn't often talked about. But with respect to this nuance of whether or not we're allowing one type of thing in a zone, I'm a little mystified because when I Google Suboxone in Everett, I pull up several locations. So the idea that there's only one and it's moving from one place to another or adding a location, I don't understand because we have other clinics here in Everett. One of them is Catholic Community Services at 26th and Wetmore. I would encourage any of you with a fourteen-year-old daughter to let her walk by there at two o'clock in the afternoon and experience what I experience on a daily basis. I don't think you'd want your children walking by there at all. I've seen arguments, I've seen fights, I've had random people scream at me for no reason. We had an opportunity to inspect the building next door and have found needles all over the place, right around that building, in greater concentrations, immediately next door to Catholic Community Services, in greater concentrations than the needles we find at other locations in our downtown core. It's, the idea that Everett is not providing treatment is mind-blowing to me considering that Everett is a shining star in Snohomish County for providing these services in proportion to the other jurisdictions around us. Everett has gone way beyond what it should do or what it can do at this point to help people in need. And this proposed clinic that may come downtown to add eight hundred more potential services to downtown, I spent an hour outside THS earlier this summer. I was not expecting to see the moms with children walking in. And frankly, if that were the entire population of people coming in, I'd have a different perspective on this. But as the gentleman from THS said, you've got a large percentage of the services that are not stable like that. And downtown Everett already has too many. It's way beyond capacity, and it's a huge problem. And I would urge the Planning Commission not to move forward on this right now. It's a straw too many to break the camel's back. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Craig Scott Doll. I'm president of the Downtown Everett Association. I appreciate the opportunity to be here, and I appreciate your service on the Planning Commission. Appreciate everyone's engagement here tonight. Thank you. I'm here to encourage you to listen to the experience and judgment of our mayor, our Economic Development Director, our planning staff, and many of the people in this room who have worked hard for many years to revitalize Everett's downtown. We're saying the same thing. Do not allow a proposed methadone clinic in the downtown core. There are many good reasons for this. First and foremost, there is already an intense concentration of social services and justice facilities in downtown Everett. As the Planning Department's mapping clearly shows, the Central Business District has the highest level of services relative to any other place in the city. Part of this is by design, and part of this is by neglect. It's easier to locate services in an economically depressed area where few people are living, where the rent is cheap, and where no one cares. For a long time, that was our legacy after the mall was built and downtown died. A convenient default place for the city and county to locate services. Our efforts to revitalize downtown are still burdened by that legacy today. In spite of that history, we are a forward-looking city. In response to the challenges with addiction, mental health, homelessness, Everett has launched the Community Streets Initiative and is expanding services and housing options, including downtown. We are doing our part. What defines our efforts today versus years past is that we're trying to locate services thoughtfully with a greater sense of balance in order to give every part of Everett the best chance for success. This includes recognizing that downtown has been historically overburdened with social services and making efforts to rebalance it. It also includes recognizing that Everett itself has taken on a disproportionate share of social services in Snohomish County. Other cities must do their part. The Downtown Everett Association believes the planning staff recommendation as written is a reasonable compromise. The citing the proposed methadone clinic in Marysville, Tulalip, or along Broadway north of 24th Street would place the clinic closer to the population it is intended to serve. Moreover, this citing recognizes that Catholic Community Services already operates a drug treatment center in downtown Everett at 2610 Wetmore Avenue. Our organization shares the Economic Development Director's concerns as expressed in her letter to the Planning Commission. Revitalizing Everett's urban center has a long way to go and is still in fragile state. We believe citing a methadone clinic in downtown could trigger a tipping point effect, as you've heard, that could result in loss of business confidence and investment. This includes the potential loss of the Imagine Children's Museum, which draws hundreds of thousands of visitors to Everett's urban core. From our perspective, adding a drug treatment clinic and subtracting a museum is not an equation that supports urban renewal, and it's definitely not a risk worth taking. Lastly, we believe creating a revitalized downtown with successful housing, retail, and business activity will be critical for expanding our tax base to pay for important community services. We urge you to support our efforts by endorsing the Planning Commission's planning staff's zoning recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, so I don't have anything prepared. I just found out about this meeting today.
Can you still your name and address?
Paul Nichols, sorry. I live at 2317 McDougall. I think maybe out of all the speakers here, I moved here about two years ago, kind of in the hope that Everett was going to do something great. It looks like it is on the cusp of something great. We got the waterfront revitalization. I live in one of the areas that might be affected by this rezoning, and honestly, almost every morning I wake up and the first thing I do is look out my window to see if my car was broken into. I mean, it's been broken into twice so far. I know Mr. Johnson talked about the THS being up on First Hill, and I know exactly where he's talking about because I work downtown, I walk the streets every day, and I've seen the areas up there. There was a Seattle Times article that the people, they had a restaurant down kind of more towards the waterfront, but the rent raised up, so they went next to his methadone clinic, and they said they're on the verge of collapse right now. So unfortunately, I don't have a speech written, I don't have a lot of facts today, but I just wanted to speak out and hopefully, you know, I think that the opioid addiction crisis is, I think, it's an emergency. And I came here with an open mind because honestly, I don't understand addiction. I've never been affected by it, so I was hoping to come here and listen to speeches and try to make a decision, so, thanks.
Great, thank you.
First of all, I'm a little confused. Do I tell you my title? Do I tell you what I work, what work I do?
Just name and address for the records.
Do I give you my address?
Perfect.
It seems like people want to impress you with their titles or where their job is. I'm Christopher Glanz. I live in Everett at 211 Capri Place. And distinguished members of the Planning Commission, I have an advanced degree in psychology. I've worked in the drug and alcohol and mental health field for almost forty years, and I've done so in federal, state, and community agencies and on three different continents. But I'm not telling you this to try to promote my credibility, all right? Because given whatever experience or education I might have, it's all anecdotal, all right? What really makes a difference, experience might be good, education might be important, but what's really important is what the evidence demonstrates. There's robust science around methadone treatment, suboxone treatment, methadone treatment clinics, their placement in a community. Might as well say it right now, my opinion is that based on the evidence that I've seen, the literature, is that THS should be able to put their new clinic wherever they deem appropriate in the city. Why would you regulate where you're going to place a methadone treatment clinic? You know, you don't regulate where you're going to treat corner stores, right?
Yeah, you do.
Not to very much of an extent, right? They can be placed just about anywhere, but evidence actually demonstrates that the corner store, you can read the Baltimore study, you can read several other studies, actually has more of a negative impact on crime in the area than a methadone treatment facility does. I can cite, I could cite, I mean, I went through some review, some literature review over the past few days, and I can cite studies and statistics and all that stuff from a wide plethora of scientific literature that's been published, verified, reliable, peer-reviewed, and quantitated. And there is no evidence that anyone I think can come up with to refute the importance or the benefits of opiate treatment or opiate replacement treatment. The opinions and innuendos and biases and stigmas and emotions and generalizations are fairly meaningless when you look at the statistics, when you look at the evidence. Even the, where is it? Even the National Institute of Justice rates medication-assisted treatment for individuals with opioid dependence as effective in reducing crime. I'm probably losing my place here. The bottom line is opiate substitution treatment works. They do not bring crime to the area where they're located any more than a corner store does. If they need to be in the downtown corridor, then that's where they should be. I mean, look in the downtown corridor. Everyone here is talking about there needs to be something in the downtown corridor because of all the people that are there that are in need. So obviously, if that's where it needs to be, that's where it should be placed. They're cost-effective, and they save lives, families, and impact positively on communities. So in conclusion, thank you for your time.
Thank you. David Smith, Mr. Smith?
Nope.
Okay.
I didn't actually realize I was saying you have to speak, but after listening to everyone, I think we can agree. We lived at 3417 Tulalip Avenue, Rucker Hill, for thirteen years. And location, location, location. I've worked in public service for twenty-five years with addicted youth and now in our education system. I think it's important to address the addiction issues that are around, but I also think that to, we're talking about zoning, and with the Everett zoning, the way that we've built it, we lived through the recession, and we're trying to make our core safe for us to walk our children to parks without finding needles, without finding mentally ill people, excuse me, causing problems in the neighborhood, having to call our police on a regular basis to patrol our neighborhoods because of crime. At one point, we've had an entire work vehicle, $25,000 worth of tools stolen from our home and found that those things were being sold by the drug addicts in the Everett area, in the core area. And I know that we're all very concerned about the health and safety of our community because it is our community, and we worked really hard to build beautiful parks, beautiful, excuse me, beautiful children's museums, to build the waterfront up, to have our outstanding farmer's market and the potential that things like that grow. I think that other communities, Marysville was mentioned, that would be benefiting from these services should also be looked at as median grounds for the location of these services. I think it's only fair that the county shares location aside from the Everett corridor. So thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I can't see the writing here. I'm going to go for it, though. Melissa, is it Springer?
Yes. I'm Melissa Springer. I'm the general manager at the Hampton Inn. Sorry for those people who don't think that we should be telling you who we are, but to me, that's important. That's where I'm addressing this, from the point of being the general manager of a hotel that's trying to make a go in Everett. Just so everybody understands, I'm also a recovering alcoholic addict, so I have an understanding of the problem. And I don't think that most of the people who have stood up here tonight and said, "Not in the downtown core," think that we shouldn't have methadone clinics. I think that's short-sighted on some of the comments, you know, "Oh, you don't care about that." We do care about that. But a lot of money has been spent by the city, by private businesses, to make the corridor a safe, welcoming place for people coming in from out of the area. When I start seeing TripAdvisor things talking about the homeless population and the drug use in the downtown, I'm telling you, your money's getting wasted. The city is wasting the time and energy they've spent to try to revitalize the core. I'm not saying there shouldn't be methadone clinics. I'm saying the downtown core may not be the spot. We cleaned around our building today, and we found fifteen needles. I have people coming in to, that are high as a kite, yelling at my guests, having long conversations, sitting out front with themselves. I have people coming to this town from the middle of the country. They don't, they're not comfortable with this. They are not comfortable seeing, having people interacting with them. I admit, I agree, these people need help, but we have a planning department for a reason. We have zoning for a reason. There is a difference between the Everett clinic and a methadone clinic. I'm sorry, I believe that there is. I believe that we need to consider what you're going to do to the businesses in the downtown core. You need to look at the amount of money that the city has already spent on this, and you need to realize the businesses in the downtown core need help. I am calling the police on a regular basis because of mentally ill and high people. That doesn't mean that we have to have a methadone clinic next to my hotel. That means, yes, there are people that need help, but the planning department is supposed to be putting these clinics in the safest, best place for the clinic, and I'm telling you, it's not our downtown core. You'll destroy the businesses that are here. And then who will be paying the taxes that can help support... And then who will be paying the taxes that can help support the safe streets and everything? You need a tax base, and we're trying to bring people in. We've got new hotels coming in, and if you make it impossible for us to do business, you're not going to have the tax base anyway. We'll go back to a downtown core that's not, not usable by anybody but the people that don't pay taxes. So keep that in mind, that we need help too. Thank you.
Thank you. Liz Vogeli?
Hello, my name is Liz Vogeli. I live at 1103 93rd Street Southwest, so I am down in the Westmont neighborhood, very close to Holly neighborhood. I didn't plan anything, but I have certainly been taking notes. I want to first and foremost say, yes, vote on the rezoning as a positive. Yeah, do it. I think it needs to be rezoned. I am not familiar with all the C3BU7s, but it would appear that if you change the code, it doesn't have to have a clinic two blocks from the children's museum. You know, there are many opportunities in different locations. And I was thinking, though, if there is a building set two blocks from the children's museum, then it's going to be, you know, patrolled, right? So actually, that could be a pretty good place, because they're not going to be hanging outside the museums. Maybe I'm wrong, maybe it's three blocks away, and then we're all in for it. I have been to the children's museum with my kids, I have them. I'm actually surprised, Mr. Tisdale, that you don't know where the other methadone clinic is, since that's, it sounded like you said that you hadn't been there and didn't know where it was, so.
I know where it is, out by Evergreen Way and Hotel 6.
Yeah. Oh, earlier in this very meeting, you said that you didn't know where it was, so I thought that was interesting, since you're on the Planning Commission. I'm not sure, as another point, how a treatment facility brings in lots more addicts. You know, they're already running rampant and talking amongst themselves and to others. I personally go up to them and say hello. I am that kind of person, and I've met some nice ones. They haven't been shooting up at the time that I meet them, but, you know, people are okay, even mentally ill ones. You may think that I am right now, I'm seeing some looks, yeah, I get it, but I'm not. Wouldn't a treatment center encourage folks to have better behaviors? I'm not, I haven't done all the research, but if you have people that work at Boeing and they need treatment, you know, those people are going to the treatment center. They're open at six, they can get in before first shift, I don't know. There's just all sorts of people that need the treatment. It's not just the crazy addicts that are on the street that we see right now, so. That's it. I also don't want you to wait till December to get even more people talking. Maybe it's a good thing, but if you've been talking about this for years and years, why not just get it done, rezone, do it? Thank you.
Thank you. Neil McIntyre?
Neil, Neil Margaret McIntyre. We've owned a business at 2942 Colby Avenue for the last twenty-two years. I can tell you that drug issue has affected our business greatly. It walks through the doors, not just in our backyard. It shoots up in my restroom, they pass out in my restroom, they hide drugs to sell in my restroom. We deal with this every single day. It is a big problem. And when you're planning on the rezone, keep in mind, as a downtown business owner, we have Compass Health. We deal with the mentally ill every single day. We have the jail. Where do you think they go when they get out of jail? They don't go down and jump on a bus, they come downtown. We deal with this every single day. I find it offensive that people say that downtown doesn't do their fair share. I Googled drug treatment centers on a simple internet search. It listed Everett is having fourteen treatment centers. Lynwood, coming second with six. Marysville and Monroe, third, with three each. Lake Stevens, Muckelteo, Granite Falls, and Snohomish have nothing. We do our fair share, and we pay for it every day. It costs us money. So please keep that in mind when you make your decision. Thank you.
Thank you. Michelle Kobe Conley? Okay, thank you.
Hi, my name's Michelle Conley. I'm at 2928 Rucker. I'm very thankful to hear everyone's opinion on the drug problem, which extends beyond Washington. I'm very grateful that the THS has done such a great service, and I just don't want to see it in downtown Everett. And I'm going to be completely, I'm going to be completely honest with you, I am very shocked that we are sitting here debating whether or not we do enough, when we do a lot, and I'm shocked that it makes me feel like I'm a bad person and I don't care, that I don't think it needs to be in our corridor. But we have worked really hard. I own my building, as well as run my company out of it. We have worked really hard to build Everett up, from getting rid of the mill, to creating new apartments and density, restaurants on the rise, and now we're just going to enter a drug treatment center in downtown because we really need it. We really need it, but I really am not convinced that because we build it, they will come. I believe that we can find a place that will build a safe haven, and people that want to change, want to change, can. But I don't think having a clinic in our downtown corridor, we've got to look at the big picture. We have to look at our families. We are more than three hundred or eight hundred people. We're thousands of people, and we live here, and we care about Everett, and we care about this community, we care about our business, and I don't think it's fair that we are put into a box, that we don't have the right to be able to be as free as the other people because we're not drug addicts. We're going to put a clinic in downtown Everett, it's just going to expand, it's just going to change the problem, and I just don't think it will. Thank you.
Thank you. Diane Clausen?
Hi, my name is Diane Clausen, and I live at 222 96th Place Southeast in Cascade View neighborhood. And what I want to add to this discussion is a human side of this. And first of all, I want to say, it's very helpful to hear everybody with all different points of view, and this is the kind of discussion we need to keep having. And my background and reason for speaking up, besides being a resident of Everett, who really cares about Everett, like everybody here, is that I have had the opportunity and the honor to work with people who are mentally ill and addicted, sometimes coexisting, sometimes separate, one or the other, for over forty years. And I worked in different states, but I've been in Everett for over ten years. And I would like to speak to this epidemic, because as the gentlemen from THS explain, it's been around for a long time, but we have a new epidemic, and a lot of it is because of the Pharma, Big Pharma. And just to get it straight, I am saying yes, positive, for increasing treatment, and here's why. Because in my ten years of working in Everett in a downtown treatment center for mental health, the community mental health center, of all, and working with mentally ill people, about twenty-five to fifty percent of the people I worked with each of the ten years were addicted to something. And the opiate epidemic has ballooned. And I really get it, what the business people are saying, and the residents are saying, that they don't like being around these people, and I don't think it's non-caring. I do not think it's non-caring for addicts. I really understand that. And it's not, the behavior that some addicts have is very inappropriate. But there are other addicts, and I, I don't think everybody understands the enormity of the problem. And I worked with probably a hundred or more addicts in the last ten years, maybe two hundred, that did not fit that MO or, or description of the people on the street yelling and screaming. And even some of those people started out with being treated for pain. And Big Pharma, over the last eight years to ten years, has promoted pain medication. Now what happens when you can't keep getting pain medication, and some professional catches on, or a doctor, to the fact that you are drug-seeking, you do not have a legitimate need for this? Now, I've worked with a lot of very ill, physically ill people, who cannot see that they don't have a need for it because of the way pain works and the way these high, potent pain pills work, they're opiates. And convincing them of that is sometimes very difficult. But it is a myth that people who are on these drugs don't want treatment and don't want help. And it was so frustrating to me and clients that I had worked to get into THS, to get into Catholic Community Services for opioid treatment, and people don't realize what a struggle that is. They are overcrowded. They do have waiting lists. And for someone who's addicted to heroin after the drugs that they took, that a doctor prescribed, which is very much the case in many situations, it is painful. Have you ever known anyone who is detoxing from an opiate? It is not pleasant.
Ms. Clausen?
It is horrendous. So to wrap it up, you know, to wrap it up, these are real people, they're human beings, they deserve, and a lot of these behaviors, we don't like downtown. If we had treatment for these people, where they're at, that would take care of the problem. That would help them change these behaviors, and it wouldn't be so unpleasant, because they wouldn't be out there behaving that way. So, thank you very much. And I hope everybody of every persuasion listened, because that's what we need, is to listen to each other. Thank you.
Thank you. David Roberts?
Hello, my name is David Roberts. I live at 11527 Highway 99. I'm a father of two, and I'm a member of the Everett Democratic Socialists of America. I actually don't live very far from the location detailed in a recent article in the Everett Herald about a needle cleanup at a forest near the Home Depot on Airport Boulevard. Volunteers and recovering addicts swept the area and disposed of thousands of needles found hiding among the trees. We see stories like this all the time. Families of children finding needles in parks, near schools, in our neighborhoods. People suffer in silence. We only happen to stumble across the aftermath. This is, unfortunately, the reality of living in Everett. Proof that our city is caught in the throes of an opiate crisis that is gripping our country, whether we care to admit it or not. That is why I'm calling upon the Planning Commission to vote to approve this code amendment to allow a second opiate substitution treatment facility to be built downtown. Clinics are the safest and most humane way for addicts to receive treatment, and reports that they cause an increase in crime rates have been debunked time and again. A 2013 study by the National Institute of Drug Abuse in Baltimore found that crime didn't increase near methadone clinics. Three years later, another study in Baltimore, initiated by the Johns Hopkins Bloomberg School of Public Health, found that crime was twenty-five percent more likely to happen near a liquor store than it would near a methadone clinic. The fact of the matter is that these clinics save lives, giving people who are desperate for help the assistance they need, and help reduce usage and overdose deaths across the board. Now, I know we want to improve Everett's image, to make it appear more modern and enticing to the 21st century citizen, but Everett does have an opiate crisis on its hands, and ignoring this problem will not make it go away. We will feel the effects of this decision whichever way we choose to act, and I ask you this, which is more detrimental to a city's image, construction of a clinic that would rescue and rehabilitate people harmed by this horrific epidemic, or more reports of increases in overdose-related deaths, or stories of children wandering across yet another patch of needles? For me, I know I'd much rather live near a clinic and know that people are getting treatment than find random used needles at a park my kids play at. This is why I'm urging the council to approve this code amendment and give those addicted to this terrible drug some hope. The council drew a line in the sand in the battle against opioids when it decided to sue Purdue Pharma, but it is not enough for us to punish those who caused this epidemic. We must help those most hurt by it, and we must do it with compassion and humanity, not fear. Thank you.
Thank you. Shannon Myers?
Hello, I'm Shannon Myers at 3003 Colby Avenue, and I am the other general manager at the Courtyard by Merritt Hotel. So, similar with Melissa, and we have spoken, obviously, I'm here to speak from a business perspective and appreciate everything outside of that, but obviously, I need to look at the travel and tourism, which is why I do what I do, right? So, I will say that when I first started coming to the hotel, before the hotel was built, which if you lived in Everett was going on for a very long time, I was office-ing out of the Colback Building, and I was absolutely shocked at what was happening just when I was coming there. I honestly was not feeling safe working out of that office for some time. I did talk to the city briefly about concerns, obviously, bringing Merritt Hotel, our guests observing, that scene in general would definitely be a deterrent from people feeling safe, and that is obviously my focus. Here is our guests and what they perceive, and similar to what Melissa said, we fortunately have only had one TripAdvisor mentioning it, but there are, obviously, most people know there are several, booking.com, hotels.com, there are several third parties where people can do reviews. And people look at that, and if they see things, particularly families, if they see things that are safe or unsafe, they're going to look at that as to where they're traveling. Same with big groups that come to the area, whether it's Xfinity hosting a big meeting, and if these are people that want to come back year over year, if they're observing things, they're going to give those travel planners feedback, and they will consider looking at other locations if they get a lot of feedback and the place itself isn't safe. So, I was very excited. I came from Muckelteo, I was there for eight years, I've grown up in the area, I was very excited to come to Everett because I had heard so many wonderful things about what's happening here. I'm very aware of the past and the reputation that Everett has, so it's very exciting, all the good things coming on, but I absolutely would be very concerned, we have 7-Eleven in general to worry about, but I will say that after I talked to the city about some of the things I witnessed, that area in particular is a business improvement area, if you don't already know, and so I have noticed a big difference, obviously, having, we're on the other side of here, having the police in our backyard definitely make a difference, but, so I just appreciate you listening to the location, that is all I'm here to speak about, so, thank you.
Thank you. Well, those are all the people I had signed up to speak to the Planning Commission on this agenda item this evening. If there's anyone else that would like to address the Planning Commission on this issue, please come forward now and, seeing none. So we heard a lot of great testimony tonight, and thank you, and I can honestly probably speak for the commission, that we realize this is an epidemic nationwide. Our job is to review a land use settlement, so it's a zoning code, it's, we're not going to solve any health issues as a planning commission, so, but I really appreciate all of the insight and professional feedback that we've gotten from everybody this evening, so. With that, planning commissioners, I don't see any other public testimony. Is there a motion to close the testimony and potentially continue that to a later date on December 5th?
I would still move Mr. Chair.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? Seeing none, call for the vote.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Lavra?
Yes.
Yes.
Commissioner Zelinski?
Yes.
Commissioner Beck?
Yes.
Commissioner Jordison?
Yes.
Commissioner... Chair Holland?
Yes.
So, the staff has asked us to table this, obviously, this evening for additional considerations from legal and others. Is there any additional questions or comments as staff before we move on to the next agenda item, or any comments based on the testimony received tonight? Commissioner Zelinski?
I just have one question of staff. One of our... One of the downtown business owners testified that they Googled treatment facilities or some such thing and came up with 14 in Everett. Since our code only allows one, I'm assuming that some of those facilities don't necessarily meet our definition of what a treatment facility is. But I am kind of curious about what he found and what those other 13 facilities are besides the one THS facility that we know about.
Yeah. My assumption is it's probably, you know, drug and alcohol treatment facilities that aren't prescribing, you know, medications and stuff like that.
That still seems really high.
Ellen? Mine is around... If the greatest need is in Marysville, Taleup, and North Everett, I saw the letter between the mayors, Maring and Stephenson, and Dave Summers. And I'm wondering, what is going on with that? I mean, if we're going to get some of the testimony, says we need to be as close to this as we can, why are we not pursuing those kinds... I'd like to have you guys have further discussion with those cities and find out why or if they're interested.
I can speak from the Marysville perspective, since I work for the city of Marysville in the land use department. So, there has been discussion about a facility in that location, but it always comes back to there's no facility that suits them adequately, and they're not willing to construct a facility. Marysville also has a host of criteria that you have to meet, and one of them is hours of operation. The hours of operation don't necessarily fit their business model, as well as location, you know, distance from, you know, potential impact properties, such as it could be a museum or a school or things like that. So, I think that they've looked in the Marysville area, just from my perspective and what I know, but they haven't found such a facility to actually get a lease and move into.
Does Marysville actually identify methadone clinics as a separate definition by their land use code?
They do. And it's allowed in most zones, just subject to... And it is, yeah, it's in our packet here. It's just it's subject to a certain set of criteria you have to meet in order to operate that facility. But it's allowed in most of the commercial and industrial land use districts.
I think it's going to be an interesting conversation that we're going to be having about this.
And I think it's similar to like a marijuana facility. You know, the state puts some stuff you can put in there, whatever else.
I mean, if it's general, and I think that that's an important qualifier for folks to understand. The contention I had is we have a medical clinic definition that is very general and very broad. And then, we tweeze out of that an opioid, methadone clinic. That's very discriminatory. And I hear the concerns that people have in terms of social services, but if someone wants to open another type of social service in the downtown Everett district right now, they could do that by our land use code. What we're doing is we're identifying this particular use that's very discreet and discriminating, in my opinion. And I'm basing my opinion off of the Civil Rights Act for the Americans with Disability. So, I think it's really important that people understand that there is precedent out there that the way we're using this particular definition appears to be discriminatory. And I think that's what we're going to be hearing from staff. Hopefully, staff will be researching this more in depth. This is not about the downtown area and a particular location. This is really about how we're defining medical clinic in the city of Everett in terms of the concerns that I brought up. I think it's important to note that difference.
Mr. Jordison?
Just a comment that I have. You know, I don't think it was ever THS's intent. It certainly wasn't our intent to be provocative or confrontational with downtown Everett Association or any of the downtown business people. We simply... You know, my personal... I've always been adamant that we need to find a place. We need to find a place. And it seems that no matter where we go, if it's North Broadway, or if it's downtown, or wherever we put it, somebody's not going to be happy about it. There's always going to be a problem. But, you know, I... There probably somebody else here could confirm this. I heard, and I work at Taleup, and I heard that just in the last several months, there were half a dozen overdose fatalities, and these were all people that were under 21 years old. And, you know, my heart goes out to the lady who was talking about her son. I can't fathom the sadness of losing a child, especially with something that was as preventable and treatable as this. And I'm not so... You know, there is all sorts of... We could be litigious about it, or we could be, you know... But my feeling is, you know, it's just... We're at a point where it's not okay to do nothing. It's not okay to just keep talking about it. I mean, like, one lady was saying, "Well, don't put it off till December." I don't know. You know, if it were up... If I could make a motion right now that we do something to at least allow one more treatment center in the city of Everett, I would say, "Yeah, let's do that." I don't... You know, we're not... Since we're not doing that tonight, I hope that next time, we can actually take a step forward, whatever that step is. All I know is we need to find a place, because we're losing... I mean, we're losing children, for God's sakes. You know, what else can I say? You know? I mean, you business people, you people that are into real estate, you people that know... You people, the city of Everett, you know how to find a building. There's got to be a building around here somewhere. I mean, good grief. I mean, we've got lots of empty buildings, you know? There's got to be one that's got a little bit of distance between them and their neighbors, you know? I mean, for goodness sakes. I mean, and there's people... There are homeless addicts, you know, going all the way up and down from, you know, they're in Taleup, they're in Everett, they're in Snohomish, they're in Marysville. They're everywhere. They are just everywhere. There are no... It's hard to find a... Any like a little grove of woods where there aren't people camping out, and almost all those encampments include people that are addicted. And, you know, I don't really know... You know, I'm at a point where I could be indignant, or I could use... I could be sarcastic, or I could do all kinds of things. But mostly, I'm at the point where I'm like, I'm pleading. I'm pleading that, please, do something. We have to do something. We can't just keep putting it off. I mean, I know it's easier to wait till the election and then figure out what's going to happen later, but no, I don't think we should do that. I think we should... Whatever we do in December, we need to take a step forward. We need to take affirmative action, whatever that is. So, you know, it's going to be hard... It's hard for me, and I'm sitting, and I'm listening to everybody, and I'm trying to be absolutely open-minded to all the points of view. But, you know, it really... You know, it's not about, you know... I don't know if I could say much more about it. We have to take action, and I will do anything and everything, you know? If somebody wants to... You know, if you want to come after somebody, you know, leave these nice people. I'm the one, you know? Come after me, because I don't really care anymore. I'm at a point where, you know, I've heard too many people talking about their addicted children. I've heard about too many people who have lost their children. You know, we're at the end. We have to do something. We can't just keep... You know, it's like, should we have gone into World War II? Should we have... Or should we just have stayed here and, you know, just let Hitler do whatever he wants? You know, I mean, to me, it's that kind of a moral imperative that we have, you know? And when people come and they... Sometimes, they come and they're cloaked in virtue and morality, and they say, "Oh, you're going to expose our children to all this terrible stuff," you know? You know, what is worse? You know? Anyway, I better just... I'm going to cut it. Call it a timeout.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yeah. I wanted to clarify that, as I heard from the experts, it's Everett residents, that the waiting list is mainly Everett residents and not Marysville and Taleup. And we act as advisory to the council, so we're not here to make the final decision in any additional research that staff needs to do. They would have time to do that in time for the next council meeting. So, I disagree with putting off the decision until next month. I think there's been a lot of unnecessarily... Unnecessary waiting around this issue and pushing it aside. I do agree with always opening it up to more public comment, but this is our fourth public hearing or our third public hearing on this, and people have the opportunity to submit comments to the council and online if they weren't able to come tonight. So, I appreciate everyone that's come forward to speak on both sides and speak passionately about this issue and how it affects us, how it affects our community, but also how it would benefit, you know, our Everett residents. So, I see it as a necessary medical treatment, and I think the cap at one treatment facility is arbitrary. It's not based on population or need. So, there's definitely a need for expanding services, and I think we should move forward with a decision tonight, but that would be against staff recommendation. So, I guess we're moving on.
So, and it's completely up to the commissioners. I think it would be...
Microphone.
Sorry. So, and I think I told everyone, I had made up a proposed amendment to the zoning code, which basically just repeals anything that talks about opiate substitution treatment facility, takes away the definition, and it takes away the footnote in terms of the use. And then, it just means that the land use requirements that THS would be required to use would be the same land use required any other medical clinic would have to use. They'd have to meet those regulations. Now, that would open it up, basically, to anything that's non-residential. And you could... Through the overlay district, you could do it through multifamily. I kind of agree with Commissioner Dunn. I think we've been spinning on this, and we've had... This will be the second public hearing. I kind of think, let's let council make a decision. Any additional staff information can be provided at that time. And we're not making a final decision tonight. Everybody can show up to the public hearing that council will have to express their concerns once again. What resolution would this be in terms of number? I would like to move. I'd like to move that we adopt...
Point of order, I think you've got a motion on the floor to table it.
It's been passed, yeah.
We did, but I wanted to speak too.
Yeah, Commissioner Lavra.
I would just say that I would support Commissioner Beck's proposal, and that was what I came today to do until the last-minute discussion about tabling. So, you know, I would support your proposal.
I think you have... I think you have a number of commissioners here that would like to go ahead and put this proposal in front of city council and have staff... Okay.
Yeah, but we've made a motion to continue till the 5th, so...
Can we retract that?
That was approved unanimously. I don't know exactly what the protocol is for repealing a...
I thought we were closing the public hearing. I apologize because I misunderstood.
And continuing until the 5th. So, that was the motion that was made.
I apologize. I thought we were closing the public hearing. I didn't realize we were... But I do recognize that you said, "And continue the public hearing."
To the 5th, yeah.
Okay.
And I... And just to... I agree that we need to do something to move forward. I mean, I was, you know, on the Cairo 7 saying that last time we were here. But I think there's some legal issues that need to be vetted, and I think it's really important that we need to do that as a recommendation rather than just sending something forward at this time. So, unfortunately, those came out late, and there's some research needs to be done by our city legal staff, and I'm hoping that we'll have resolution by that prior to the 5th and be able to move it forward. And if not, we'll have an opportunity to move it forward regardless at that meeting, so...
I agree. And should have paid more attention to what the motion was for.
Same here.
I'm sorry?
I said, "Same here."
Yeah. We both thought that we were just...
No, I don't know what I thought, but...
I have one, and it's not at you, Rick, but I have a brother-in-law that went through drug and alcohol treatment eight times, finally committed suicide. So, I can hair on my arm will stand up. I feel what this lady's talking about. And I'm going to tell you, I'm going to oppose this because I don't think we have enough information. And if we've got 1,000 beds coming in a year, whatever that is, and let's say it's 500, we've got Compass Health is doing some units that come on next year. I don't think that we really understand the effects that this can have on the fragile economy that we have either. And, you know, we can be very emotional about something, and I... Some of the testimony that I heard tonight was pretty emotional because I've lived through this. We can build a facility, but if those folks don't want to go to it and they don't want help... That's what happened to my brother-in-law. We're not going to solve anything. We're just going to put people through a system. So, I listen to you, and I respect what you said.
Yeah.
And I would just hope that you would listen to what I had to add to it, because just doing it...
Respectfully, and for the record, I reject your opinion.
That's fine. Good. I love it. That's what makes a good...
Commissioner Lavra?
I just feel like people are fixated on the central business district. I mean, that isn't the only place where it could be. By opening it up, as Commissioner Beck suggested, we could look at the whole city, and they might find another place that's more appropriate. But by limiting it to North Broadway, we might eliminate it entirely. So, I really feel that we should leave it open and look for the best site and stop arguing about the central business district.
Thank you. Any additional comments? Seeing none?
Actually, one more.
Okay.
So, I'm a little concerned with the misinformation around a specific site and that, like, the Children's Museum Board had a board meeting about a particular site that is no longer on the table. So, what kind of public outreach will you be doing from now until December so that we don't get a lot of concern, citizens and residents coming to us about a particular site which is not being considered at this point?
It's been my experience, almost 40 years worth of planning, that there's no way to quell that. People will always have the impression that it's about a specific building or a specific site, and they will, whether it's accurate or not, will perceive that the decision is about a specific site. We will tell everybody that we ask or we talk to, including the news media who were calling me, asking me about that building, and if you were going to approve a permit for it tonight, that, no, that's not what it's about. And so, that's just... It's hard to counter bad information, especially when it's being spread on the airwaves. But, yeah, it's just a tough thing to get out in front of and correct after it's been disseminated incorrectly.
Okay.
I want to thank staff for being steady in the eye of a storm. I saw how many emails and letters and information, and I know that this kind of came up in a short period of time. You guys have been great. Really appreciate all your work.
Thank you.
Yeah, it's great to... Kathy and David and Alan for forwarding those on when you get them, because it, you know, would have been a lot to digest here this evening. So, it was great to get stuff early. So, thank you very much on that, so... With that, we'll move on to item number two, which is the initiation of a code amendment request regarding electric fences.
Good evening.
You guys don't want to hear about electric fences? Come on! Sorry. Everybody's leaning! Sorry.
Alan Giffen, Planning Department. Second item on your agenda tonight.
I forgot. I probably would have said something if I had really realized.
Folks, if we could kindly... If you're going to leave, if you could get you to leave quietly, so we can move on with our agenda.
Yeah.
Alan Giffen, Planning Department, second item on your agenda tonight.
I probably would've said something if I had really realized.
Folks, if we could kindly, if you're gonna leave, if you could get you to leave quietly so we can move on with our agenda.
Yeah.
Thank you.
So, but, you know, I think this is what we've been needing, is people talking about
Commissioner Beck? We're gonna move on now.
Oh, sorry.
Alan Giffen, Planning Department, we have a request from a specific applicant who has submitted some paperwork that is in your packet to initiate consideration of a code amendment, an amendment to the zoning code requirements related to electric fences. Currently, the code allows electric fences only in our agricultural zone. The proponent, company by the name of Electric Guard Dog, has been contacted by a client within the city of Everett who has a business who would like to install some additional security measures for their business and has, has asked that we initiate a code amendment process. The code amendment would, hasn't been drafted. It's just put before you to ask you to, whether or not you want to consider an amendment. If you do initiate that process, committing, excuse me, initiating the process does not commit you to any particular decision or outcome. It would just enter into a process similar to the process we just got finished discussing. Hopefully, it would not take nearly as long. But the proponent from Electric Guard Dog does have a representative here tonight. I believe he's signed up to, to speak. But you've got a memo and staff doesn't have a specific recommendation for or against initiating, initiating the code amendment. But the, the code is very specific that it's only allowed in an agricultural zone. We have a similar provision in the building regulations that only allow electric fences also in an agricultural zone.
Thank you, Alan. You wanna hear from Michael Pate before we have some discussion before initiation? Okay. Mr. Pate?
Thank you very much. All right. My name is Michael Pate. I'm from Columbia, South Carolina. It rains a little more here. I represent Electric Guard Dog. I'm the director of business development for everything west of the Mississippi. So I'm always out here. Electric Guard Dog is basically a security company. We basically guard large lots. I have a couple of folks out here who want me to guard their lots. One of them is United Rentals. And the other one is Fleet Services. They have two, two shots over, two shops over here. They both asked me to come in and guard their properties for them. We did a little research on the Everett Code. We found out that in the Everett Code, we could always install an electric security fence or just an electric fence in an agricultural zone. So we met with the folks over here in the planning department and gave them a little rundown on what we do. So I've got probably about 60 or 70 of these things all over Washington right now. I go through LNI, Labor and Industries, to permit these things through most of the state. There are a couple of very large municipalities that I have to go through and other places like Tacoma, King County, Olympia, and a couple of other very large municipalities that basically LNI has decided they can go on their own and permit these things. So it's not anything new to the state at all. Probably got 4,500, 4,000 of these things all over the country. They're very safe, very reliable. The folks at LNI are probably the strictest folks in all the country that I deal with. They've actually pushed me into a lot of things that I didn't do in the past. And have actually improved my business with, with a lot of the electrical code that they, that they, that they make us work within. Basically, it's a very simple process. We have a 12-volt battery. That's what powers the whole thing. So we're never hooked up into the electrical infrastructure at all. Those, those 12-volt batteries are powered by a couple of solar panels. Those solar panels, take, take that 12 volts, make, 12-volt battery, make sure it's charged. We have an energizer that takes that 12 volts, amplifies it to 7,000 volts. It takes 1.3 seconds for that to happen. Once that energizer's loaded, it releases that energy down the interior fence line back to an alarm panel. And that alarm panel is set at about 2,000 volts. I want a pretty clean return to this thing so, so the alarm is not going off. If I get anything below 2,000 volts, the alarm's going off after five negative pulses. The reason I'll do it on the first pulse is because anything can happen in a large yard. You've got dogs, cats, raccoons, possums, mountain lions, bears, trucks, something could hit it, back off. I don't want to be setting the alarm off on that. So five pulses is about seven and a half seconds. I'm gonna set the alarm off audibly on the site and silently back in Columbia, South Carolina. And I'm gonna go through a call list because I want a verified alarm. So I'm gonna call Mr. Holland at 2 o'clock in the morning. Mr. Holland, we have a break on your northeastern or your northern perimeter, 220 feet from the northeast corner. I measured the breaks down to about 10 feet. What do you want to do? We also have cameras with these devices. So you can sit at home on your little Wi-Fi, bring it up on your computer, look at that fence line. We had a big storm tonight, took, took a tree down on that corner, took out the whole fence, was buttoning it all up and go back to bed. Or I got five guys in a flatbed truck over there robbing me blind, please call the local police department. That's a verified alarm. I harden these sites so the police don't ever have to come out there again. Not that I can't be defeated, I can. But when I am, I'm gonna set the alarm off. So that's what we do. It's a safe, reliable product. We go through, we go through a rigorous testing protocol that was predicated by LNI. It's a two-fence system. So there's always a perimeter fence up and the electric fence goes inside of that, inside the property line. So someone's gotta be going through the first fence to hit the electric fence. It's all signed. When I say sign, you've got a, a sign up there, international signage for electric shock. It's in English and Spanish. I also do about 32 other languages, depending on the location I'm in. So the local language is always on there. Safe, reliable. If you've got any questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
Mr. Pate, were you involved with the, I know there was one in Marysville that recently received approval of Dick's, Dick's Toys.
Yes, that was me.
So you're involved in that, okay.
That was me.
Has that been installed at this point?
Yes, it has. We have a permit for that and it's all up and installed.
Great, thank you. Any questions, Mr. Pate?
So it's the second fence that would ground you if you get through the first one or?
Well, it's not gonna ground you, but well, actually it does. That's a very good term to use in this because basically what electricity does is go to find ground, so yes, it'll go through you on ground. And since it's a pulsed electrical device, it's gonna reload. 1.3 seconds, reload. 1.3 seconds, reload.
Well, is it a contact alarm or is it gonna shock you?
It's gonna do both. It's gonna, it's gonna, the alarm doesn't go off unless the ground goes down.
Mm-hmm.
For five pulses. So you're gonna get a shock, number one. Number two, the deterrent effect of just having the fence up there is probably the, the best thing that we do. But if you get one of the 1 percenters going at me, they're gonna go ahead and get a shock. And if they go ahead and defeat the system, the alarm goes off. So I've got, I've got three layers of security on these particular properties.
And the shock is an intermittent shock?
Intermittent shock. You already allow these devices in agricultural zones.
Right, I've run cattle before, so I know a little bit about it.
Very similar to a cattle fence. I just, I just met some folks in Lansing, Michigan, and the, and the chief electrical inspector there. He said, "Hell, this is a cattle fence."
So what?
I said, "Yes, sir."
What, what was the voltage on the shock, again?
It's 7,000 volts, somewhere between 7 and 9. The shock is very similar to being in your stocking feet, going across a carpet, reaching out to a door handle, touching it. You can see a little spark there. We don't even spark, but you're getting about 11, 12,000 volts when you do that.
So wouldn't, would it be lethal for somebody with a health problem perhaps?
No, no, it's not. Non-lethal.
Okay.
Won't affect, it was non-lethal to everybody. When I say everybody, I mean even people with pacemakers. It's not lethal to anybody. These devices have been around since 1939. Out, out in the agricultural areas, there's never been a death or a serious injury with the proper installation of an electric security fence or an electric cattle fence.
That's still a lot of volts. And I, and I have childhood experiences with electrical fences. And I also know childhood experiences, having kids do things on those fences that aren't very, so in a city environment, I mean, that seems like, that's kinda. I think we need to initiate this and just want to make sure that this is safe.
It's very, it's safe.
Because I've seen the bad side of it.
LNI has been really hard to deal with. And LNI has made my business better. But I'm in some really dense urban environments. The city of LA, LA County, the entire LA basin, 18 million people live there. I've gotten, I've gotten legislation approved by the state of California to allow these throughout the state. And the state of Florida, those are some, you know, fairly populous areas, Dallas, Houston, Fort Worth, San Antonio, El Paso. I haven't gone to the state legislature in Texas yet because they only meet every other year. I know, most people didn't know that.
Alan, is the electrical, is the electrical in Everett done by LNI? Or do you have your own electrical?
No, city has its own electrical inspector.
So they would be doing the permitting on?
Yes.
On that, okay. Any other questions for?
I had a question about the audible deterrent. So what's the reaction to sirens in an urban environment?
Well, you know.
Are all the neighbors upset?
When a siren goes off, everyone turns, it's like a car alarm. Everyone looks and says, "What's happening?" Usually, when, if it's gonna be a thief or, you know, a burglar or criminal, they're, they're gonna try to get away. I mean, they know something's going on, you know, that they've tripped an alarm, they're gonna try to get out of there. So that's, that's part of what we do too, is, is the burglar alarm on it. It's usually a klaxon-style alarm. I have several different alarms I can use depending on what the specific recommendations or protocols are within that particular municipality and also the time limits, 30 seconds, 60 seconds, 90 seconds, whatever you're allowed to do before we basically shut it down.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Zelinski?
Just a question for staff. Alan, to your knowledge, has the city of Everett ever considered this kind of thing before?
No, not in the 31 years I've been here. Only when we were writing the code back in the late 80s, when we, I think, put this into the zoning code, that, the only time we ever considered it and didn't do a whole lot of research back then.
But maybe it's time to.
Alan, I would recommend if the commission so chooses to initiate the, the code amendment, that you get both police and fire involved. I know from the experience that I had that there were some kinks that needed to be worked out and some education that needed to be done before they were able to give their sign-offs.
That's a great suggestion. Thank you.
Particularly with fire.
Yeah.
I'm just curious, would it be, are you, are these just industrial zones that you're talking about or?
All non-residential zones. Most of the businesses that use these particular devices are specific to manufacturing, industrial and heavy commercial zones. It's gonna be, someone's got a large, open yard. United Rentals, Sun State Rentals, metal man, recyclers, trucking firms, equipment rental, automobile dismantlers, you know, people like that that have a lot of inventory out in a yard that someone can walk by and see and basically go, "Hell, I'm gonna steal that tonight."
And what's the distance between the, the first fence and the secondary?
Well, the standard says 100 to 200 millimeters, which is about four to eight inches approximately. Yeah, we, you know, we're in America, we don't deal with the metric system, so we usually get it right around a foot. But the standard actually tells you 100 to 200 millimeters.
And the one that was permitted, Marysville had a conversation with the owner there and it's really, it's just, you can only take so much theft and the police can only be there so often that it.
Right.
You, you start losing thousands and thousands and hundreds of thousands of dollars.
Definitely a deterrent.
Yeah.
It really hardens a site and the police don't have to go there anymore. And, you know, I've been here for the last couple of hours and it sounds like your police department's pretty stretched. They don't have to go back out to these sites anymore. And, and they've been getting hit pretty hard. That's the only reason they ever call me.
Any more questions for Mr. Pate? Thank you.
Thank you.
So do I hear any motions or discussion regarding the request to initiate a code amendment tonight?
I move that we initiate a code amendment so staff can further investigate this.
I'd second that.
Any discussion? Okay, call for the vote.
Commissioner Dunn? Yes. Commissioner Lavra?
Yes.
Commissioner Zelinski?
Yes.
Commissioner Beck?
Yes.
Commissioner Georgerson?
Yes.
Commissioner Tisdale?
Yes.
Chair Holland?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, on to item three, Metro Everett. It looks like, Alan, we have, I think, over five minutes? Is that when we have to make a motion for a continuance? Is that right?
You wanna extend beyond 9 o'clock? That's your rules to decide, you might as well.
We can do five minutes if you want to.
Are you sure? Well, before we get started, we want to make a motion to extend maybe to a quarter after if necessary.
I'm putting my faith in David that he can do it.
Do you wanna make a motion?
I'd make a motion, we extend to 9:15. We certainly don't wanna run ourselves short on a big issue.
I second it.
Any discussion? Okay, call for the vote.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Lavra?
Yes.
Commissioner Zelinski?
Yes.
Commissioner Beck?
Yes.
Commissioner Georgerson?
Yes.
Commissioner Tisdale?
Yes.
Chair Holland?
Mr. Stallman?
All right, well, at the last meeting, when Josh was here, we had a computer that was painfully slow. So we have a computer that actually works on the 3D modeling now. So in your packet, you have the, the package that, for building heights, we prepared this and gave this to you before. It is slightly modified in that we, after the last discussion, we did change some of those areas down along Rucker Avenue adjacent to the Norton Grand Historic District and so some of those heights. So in the very first page, we have the areas that were modeled. And right now, I have areas one and eight up. And so this is along Rucker and Pacific. So just allows you to get a feeling for what these buildings are. Josh has been working with Niels with some of the ideas of the design standards. As you can see, as the buildings go up in height in these areas is that they start stepping back so they can obtain the height. So from the perspective of the street, this is as you're looking south along that, you're not getting that feeling of a, a large cavern feeling within this area. And, and again, we dropped some of the heights adjacent to the Rucker, Norton Grand Historic Districts, bring those heights a little bit closer into perspective there. So there's a whole bunch of other areas. And so if you wanna look at that, it's hard to load all these all at once. And so it's a little bit easier just to load a couple. So if you have any areas on that page one that you wanna go take a look at, I'd be glad to turn that on and go zoom into that area. So what I'm talking about in this, this little pack of the little numbers there identify which areas, so.
Any particular area on that cover page that we're interested in? Probably somewhere along the edges or something like that that there's been discussion on?
So that's Pacific, is that Rucker right there?
This is Pacific, this is Rucker.
Yeah, okay.
Yep.
No, that's actually the area that I was interested in. That's the.
Yep, this is looking, this is looking east down Pacific right now.
Okay, yeah. This is helpful.
Yeah, it's a pretty, pretty nice tool. Turn off area one and if you wanna go, we can go to area nine. See if I can find it. Getting turned around.
Oh, yeah, 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 yeah.
So this is proposed?
Yeah, this is proposed heights in this area. And again, you know, part of the idea of the design standards that we would have would, would have this step back to get to the, the heights. And so when you look at the articulation, modulation and the heights, it would, again, not have that feeling right there, that perspective of really going too tall.
David, can, can you move that down to actual pedestrian, eye level as a pedestrian?
I can, I think.
Oh, well, too far.
Somewhere. They promised me somewhere. Now look what you did. Uh-oh.
Sorry.
It was a good idea. There is a way to do that. I didn't test that.
That gives us an idea.
So if I just don't zoom in too close, yeah, that kind of thing, but. Oh, there it goes again, yeah. Well, now we know the sensitivity. Don't go too far. Don't go too far.
Is that 70 feet? I don't have the.
No, that would be, that's five stories building there in that area. So again, you know, the, yeah, the perspective of some of this kind of helps to see how it kind of fits within the neighborhood, within that.
How about 26th and Colby? I can't see the zone here, but up by the high school.
10? Or no? Is that what you want, 10?
Yeah, I can't. I just swing it around.
I don't think we have anything at 26th and Colby modeled.
Okay.
Do we? We have some stuff along the parking lots, area seven.
Four is up more north. Four is 25th and looks like what, what more? Or no?
Yeah, that'll work.
Broadway.
I guess it is.
Broadway's too far.
Oh, there's, you have seven on there, though. That's up in the corner.
That's where he's going now. Oh, there we go. So here's the Kimberly-Clark parking lots. So what the building heights potentially could be there. And so again, you kind of see the grades there. So the grades take these buildings not really any taller than that.
Now, do you, is the height measured from four corners of the building? Is that how, and you take the average base to go get to the height? Is that correct or?
It's measured from the midpoint of each of the sides of the smallest rectangle that would enclose the building.
Average grade plane?
We are going to use stories and have a definition of stories rather than height now too. So with defining how tall a story, you know, the limits there as well. So then you don't get into the weirdnesses about some, you know, articulated roofs and stuff like that.
Yeah.
Kind of thing, so.
So all the stories in the same, in a building would be the same height?
No, I, the first story would be taller. I think we're looking at maybe up to 15 feet for the first story. And I think upper floor is a maximum of 10 feet. And I think maybe, maybe even less than that. I can't remember.
We haven't figured out all the regulations yet, so.
Would a multifamily building, just strictly multifamily, be subject to that or just for a mixed-use type of facility with the higher height on the first level? Even, I know you haven't.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
I know you haven't gotten.
No, 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 no. Yeah, I've talked about it in the commercial, industrial.
Okay.
Yeah, not in a residential, they have a taller first floor. Yeah.
We haven't written up all those regulations yet to tell you exactly how it will work.
We can head down to Everett Station if you want. Click here and look around where the light rail is proposed. And again, here's Pacific and here's Broadway. You get a sense of the building scale is potentially there. And again, you know, one of the ideas that we're trying to do is, you know, along these corridors is not to have a very tall building right along the corridor. So you have a little bit of a.
Step back.
Step back. So the, as you're driving or walking along that corridor, you don't have the feeling of, of, you know, the cavernous feeling there. We actually do have the light rail, I think, modeled too that, this one goes through the building so that.
Perfect.
Yeah.
You just get right in from your.
So get on, get off, you know. Yeah, move your desk, train's coming through. We actually do have some buildings in another layer, the TOD Streets layer, that we moved these buildings once we got the, that layout. But this is kind of a good thing too because it kind of gives you a perspective of how the idea that we have for this going over Pacific Avenue here. And we have it modeled, but the bridge that goes over the railroad tracks would continue that bridge up to Broadway. And then the buses would go underneath down McDougal, down this area is part of the concept. And then over walkway to get across, off of the platform across into downtown. So this is kind of our initial concept of where light rail could be coming in to Everett. So.
Alan, I know some of the more recent buildings that have been constructed, at least within the last 10 years there, that the local developer was not real keen on this step back because they're losing obviously leasable space as you go up. Are we expecting or have we heard anything from those local developers downtown about any of these potential regulations or they just haven't been circulated enough to?
Well, we haven't drafted them yet so that, but we do intend to go out and talk with, you know, local architects and developers about it.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, we have been looking at it and it's mostly internal conversation right now, but we do intend to have those conversations to make sure that they, they work and they're buildable with this. But so far, some of the things, and Niels is aware of those things, when you look at the floor plates and things like that, and so far, we're, we feel like we're on the right path. But I'm sure that someone will probably tell us a little bit otherwise.
Sure.
We'll be glad to listen and adjust, make sure that this all works. So we're actually working on another thing that Alan was asking for the other day to compare the existing and proposed. And it's kind of interesting, it's not going to have all the, a little bit more of the fancy design things, but we're doing the buildup so that you can see a whole block and see how the, kind of the base heights and then the additional heights are. And it's really interesting because it's just kind of a real rough draft right now. But you can see where the base heights are and then you can see some of these taller buildings, like the jail and stuff like that. You can see how they, it's like the fog, they're above that. And you can see what we expect as being the minimum throughout the city. And we already have some buildings that are above that. And it'll give you a little bit of a sense of how, what we really think the market will be is that we don't expect everything to build tall. We expect it to build, you know, to two, four stories to up to seven stories. And that range will be more common. But then every once in a while, you'll see some buildings popping up and, you know, you'll see like, you know, coming out of the fog, the base height for around Xfinity Arena is lower than, than the towers, for example. So it's pretty neat to have us seeing that pop up. And so we'll have some of those tools available as we get into more of the public process and show this stuff.
I think as you follow topography, you know, the heights will, you know, because you're basing that on, usually on the natural grade.
Right.
And then, you know, as the buildings get sort of filled in and they all start to follow the topography up.
Stay here.
And then you'll start to see those, those land features actually reflected in the buildings themselves. So, and there will be opportunities for them to actually max out their height and area in those, in those, in those situations.
Yeah. So anyhow, we have these areas, these are tools available. And, you know, you're welcome if anyone wants to come in and we can tour around each one of these and spend time too. So if you want to come to our office, we can load this up in Google Earth and, and tour around with you and show you existing and proposed and stuff like that too.
Was there anyone in the audience that wanted to address the planning commission on this topic tonight? I've seen none. Any other questions, staff?
This is really a nice tool.
Yeah.
So. If there's a way to get down, if there's a way, you can actually get down to pedestrian level, that would be fabulous. But maybe the software won't allow that.
It does. I, Niels has done it. I, I didn't get my instructions before the meeting.
So when you're using these in a public workshop, you'll be able to do these on the fly too in terms of going in and out of these areas to show folks?
Yeah, we're, we're looking at some other things. I, you know, honestly, I'm kind of thinking about actually having more of a video movie of this so that we can do this. So rather than on the fly, we can do this and have it on the website perhaps so people can go and do that as a video tool kind of thing. Because, or again, you know, we're glad to sit down and have these discussions with neighborhood groups or individuals and planning commission members. We're going to do, go through some of the stuff with city council, schedule for the end of November as well. So they have a keen interest in the height topic as you folks do.
The Historical Commission or the Historic Everett, I can't remember which one, but they brought up some concerns around building height. What changes were made in reference to those concerns?
I haven't, the Historical Commission hasn't had anything particular about that. The issues that we've had is the Riverside District.